Regular meeting number four will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the national anthem. Councilmember Mitchell Brown, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now welcome Dr. John Little from Resurrection Missionary Baptist Church to lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Eternal God our Father, we thank you for this glorious and wonderful day you have given unto us. We thank you for the privilege that we are able to come and assemble here tonight. We pray for these civil servants who have committed themselves to look out for the best for the residents of the city of Columbus. We pray that you would touch each of them and give them wisdom that they need to legislate and to make decisions that will affect even the least of these. We pray that you would continue to guide their thoughts and guide their decisions. We pray for this council as a whole. We pray that you would continue to keep them, continue to guide them. We pray for this new president, that you would give him wisdom to lead this group of men and women as they legislate over our city. We thank you for this great city of Columbus. We ask your divine blessing to continuously be upon it, continue to let us work together with civil servants and community, that we too can make this a better place for all the residents of the city of Columbus. We thank you for this day. It is in your name that we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Little. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Second. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and we published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
And ask you clerk to read the new committee assignments into the record.
Finance Committee, Councilmember Priscilla R. Tyson, Chairperson, Committee members Harden, Ms. Brown, and President Klein. Health and Human Services Committee, Councilmember Priscilla R. Tyson, Chairperson, Committee members Ms. Brown, Page, and President Klein. Workforce Development Committee, Councilmember Priscilla Tyson, Chairperson, Committee members Ms. Brown, Harden, President Klein. Economic Development Committee, Elizabeth Brown, Chairperson, Committee members Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein. Environment Committee, Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, Chairperson, Committee members Harden, Tyson, President Klein. Education Committee, Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, Chairperson, Committee members Page, Tyson, President Klein. Administration Committee, Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, Chairperson, Committee members Harden, Page, and President Klein. Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Mitchell J. Brown, Chairperson, Committee members Page, Stenziano, and President Klein. Veterans Affairs Committee, Councilmember Mitchell J. Brown, Chairperson, Committee members Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Councilmember Shannon Harden, Chairperson, Committee members Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein. Small and Minority Business Development Committee, Councilmember Shannon G. Harden, Chairperson, Committee members Ms. Brown, Tyson, President Klein. Recreation and Parks Committee, Councilmember Giya Z. Page, Chairperson, Committee members Tyson, Mr. Brown, and President Klein. Housing Committee, Councilmember Giya Z. Page, Chairperson, Committee members Ms. Brown, Stenziano, and President Klein. Zoning Committee, Councilmember Giya Z. Page, Chairperson, all members serve on that committee. Technology Committee, Councilmember Michael Stenziano, Chairperson, Committee members Harden, Ms. Brown, President Klein. Public Utilities Committee, Councilmember Michael Stenziano, Chairperson, Committee members Harden, Ms. Brown, President Klein. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee, Councilmember Michael Stenziano, Chairperson, Committee members Page, Mr. Brown, and President Klein. Rules and Reference Committee, Council President Zach Klein, Chairperson, Committee members Harden, Page, and Mr. Stenziano.
Thank you, Clerk Blevins. Are there any resolutions by any members of council? Councilmember Elizabeth Brown.
Yes. Thank you, President Klein. Tonight I do have a resolution. I'd like to remove from consent Resolution 18X-2016 on page eight. With your permission, I'd like to introduce it now. Wonderful. Thank you. I would like to introduce Resolution 18X-2016 to honor, recognize, and celebrate the life and achievement of Mr. Donald Hutzler after a lifetime of public service to the Columbus and surrounding communities. Whereas Mr. Hutzler was a U.S. Army veteran who started his educational career at Sinclair Junior College and furthered his education at Ohio University and the Ohio State University. And whereas Mr. Hutzler served the Ohio Historical Society as a curator of history as well as working on collection and site development. Whereas through research and diligence, Mr. Hutzler played an integral part in restoring the Hannah Noble Log House located at 5030 Westerville Road of Columbus, which has been listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Whereas Mr. Hutzler spent many hours researching and analyzing several historical landmarks, including the Franklinton Log Post Office, also known as the David Dierderf 1807 House located at 72 Gift Street. His investigation was continuous as layers of material were peeled back and interesting features were found, researched, and discussed, eventually leading to the restoration of this historic Columbus landmark. And whereas, as a result of Mr. Hutzler's knowledge and expertise, Columbus is home to many important landmarks that will serve to educate citizens now and in the future. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus to honor, recognize, and celebrate the life and achievement of Mr. Donald Hutzler after a lifetime of public service to the Columbus community and being another great reason why Columbus is the best place to live, work, and raise a family. If there are no questions, I move for adoption of the resolution.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Mrs. Hutzler and Mr. Walt Reiner are here to accept the resolution. Would you like to make comments at the podium?
It's a pleasure to be here and say a little bit about Don Hutzler. I see we have some new blood here at the council. That's great. A lot of new energy. I think it was Winston Churchill said something about, something to the effect that if a society doesn't understand and remember their history, they're prone to make the same mistakes that they had in the past. So it's something that's very good to remember. Don Hutzler was a very unique, humble man. My wife and I were at a quandary when we discovered a log house buried inside another house on Westerville Road. And so we had no idea what to do. It was scheduled for demolition. So we called the Historical Society and we found Don Hutzler, who had an encyclopedic knowledge of things in the past, hundreds of years old, and he was able to help us. And one example is that Don, when he looked at the Franklinton Log Post Office, it was kind of a hodgepodge of construction. The man had over 12 children, so he was in a hurry to build this. Somehow, through a fluke, is still here. And it is a very important building also on the historical register. But there was a case of like, well, would it even be possible to have a sited over log house back in early 1800s, over 200 years ago? And today somebody plugs in Wikipedia, well then we just dialed up Don and we'd say, "Don, what about this?" Because we want to restore this the proper way, because it's going to be here for another 200, 300 years the way we're doing it. And he would say, "Well, there was a sawmill along the Sciota at this time in 1805, and there was one down here down the stream, and it's quite possible that they would have sawed up wood and had a sited over log house, because it wasn't uncommon." We had a bet going on at one time with the city historic preservation officer, the architect and I, because this house looked like it had evolved in different sections. And Don made the bet, he says, "Now, it was all put together at one time." Then through the science of dendrochronology, we did find out that all the logs were cut in 1807, except for some that were cut in 1798, which is the first civilization that was ever here. So somebody had moved in logs that were even older than the building. So Don was quite a guy, and he was a genius in his field. And it's very important that people think that if you're in some kind of a field that doesn't get a lot of attention, that if you do the best you can and work at it, you'll someday be appreciated. And I think we have a lot of people here that knew Don and his work, and if they could stand up...
He has quite a crowd here in appreciation of his service. Thank you.
And so, I don't want to spend too much time, but basically, Don was a genius. He was a very charitable man. He spent a lot of time helping others. And for his efforts, we do have at least two buildings that I know of that are early log structures that can serve to be tourist attractions and visible signs of our fine past here in Columbus, Ohio.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Hutzler, do you have anything you want to add? Okay. Do my colleagues have anything they want to add? Well, I want to also thank former councilmember, the indomitable Fran Ryan, for being so instrumental in getting this honor organized here tonight. Anything else? All right.
And we should add that Fran was very helpful in saving the Harrison House on Broad Street.
I have President Klein.
Thank you. Councilmember Mitchell Brown. Councilmember Harden.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening I have Resolution 0015-2015, and I'd like to invite Ms. Kimberly Blackwell to come forward. For those of you who don't know, Ms. Kim Blackwell is the amazing woman, founder and CEO of PMM Agency. Simply put, Kim Blackwell is the national leader in the field of brand management. Unrivaled in her abilities, Kim was recognized by Ebony Magazine by being named to the 2015 Ebony Power 100 List. This is an international recognition that recognizes African-Americans for their contributions to a variety of fields, as varied as art, literature, journalism, academia, business, politics, religion, and many others. This year's list included Ohio's own John Legend, Kendrick Lamar, Prince, Larry Wilmore, Lupe Fiasco, Lester Holt, U.S. Attorney General Loretta Lynch, Drake, Janet Jackson, not our Janet Jackson, but the one who's coming to Nationwide Arena this July, the Black Lives Matter Social Media Movement, and a few others, and of course, our own Kim Blackwell. This is one of the most prestigious lists that one could be named to, and I'm exceedingly proud that our own Kim Blackwell was named to the list under the corporate crowns category for being one of the boldest, brightest corporate stars that moved the needle in 2015 as an African-American. So as Chair of the Small and Minority Business Committee, Development Committee, and on behalf of my colleagues on council and the citizens of Columbus, I want to say congrats to you, to my friend Kim Blackwell. And I had to open it up. Ms., would you like to make any comments?
Very briefly. I didn't come prepared for comments. I usually am given a talking point. That said, just very briefly, thank you, thank you, and thank you. It's always nice to be recognized, but it's something especially nice when it's by, you know, those who serve on a day-to-day. And I want to very much extend my thanks to you as councilmembers and your commitment to small business enterprises, and just grateful to be here.
Thank you. Before I move for passage, do any of my colleagues have any additional comments? Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. I want to just say thank you to Kim. Certainly, she has, I know Councilmember Harden just read just some of the accomplishments that Kimberly has made to our community. But I just want to say that she is, she helps small organizations, large organizations. Kim has such a caring heart. She certainly has been working with, I know we support the program through the Ohio Minority Development Supplier Council, and Kim comes out and she teaches our businesses about marketing. But whenever you call up on Kim, I mean, she's on the WISE Board. She is always, she's very committed to this community and very charitable. She's a woman of faith, and I just appreciate her being a role model for so many women. And this has been amazing, watching your business where it first started to where it is today. And it's truly amazing, and you're so deserving of this award that Councilmember Harden has just stated that you've gotten from Ebony, and you are just a deserving individual. We thank you for the work that you do, not only in Columbus but across this country. Congratulations to you.
Thank you very much. Real quickly, and I promise I'll be brief. I do have some staff members.
Sure.
I refer to them as team members. A few of them are with me. I manage a team of consultants from across the country. But, you know, it's a lot of times I get their recognition, but they're doing the heavy lifting on a day-to-day, and I never want them to think that they are not valued within the team, and they very much make me look really good. So if they don't mind standing, for those who were able to join today, thank you very much. That means a lot to me that you were here today.
Thank you, President Protem. Any other questions or comments, further comments? With that, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next, I have 21-0021-2016 to express the city's support to the residents of Flint, Michigan during their ongoing water contamination crisis. Flint is the seventh largest city in Michigan with just shy of 100,000 residents. One-third of its residents are under the age of 18. As I'm sure many of you are aware, Flint's water supply has been poisoned by lead leaching into it. In December, the mayor of Flint and the governor of Michigan declared a public health state of emergency. My office spoke with the mayor's office and city council of Flint, and were told that the water is still not safe to drink for some residents and that other residents are still not using the water to bathe or for other normal processes, purposes. The World Health Organization has declared that there is no safe level of lead in a children's blood, also noting that lead affects a child's brain development, resulting in lower IQ scores, reduced educational attainment, and myrrh of other physical and neurological behavioral effects. So tonight I have the resolution. I don't usually read the parts of the resolution, but I thought this was important, because this is such a critical issue, and the people of Columbus have a history and a custom of helping those in need wherever they may be throughout the country and the world. I wanted to read this part. So now therefore, it be resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus, that the City of Columbus affirms its commitment to help as we are able for the residents of Flint, Michigan affected by the leaching of lead into their water supply, and that all city departments, local private business, and charitable and nonprofit organizations are urged to work with governmental and non-governmental organizations to provide material and non-material assistance for the people of Flint for so long as that community is in need. There are so many folks around the city and really around the country that are stepping up to help the folks in Flint, Michigan. Before I call up Misty Jordan with Power 106, I wanted to open up to my colleagues and see if they had any additional comments or questions. Councilmember Stenziano.
Thank you, Councilman Harden. Appreciate your leadership highlighting Columbus's commitment to service. We have gotten a few calls in Public Utilities and just wanted to briefly share that in talking with the Utilities Director, Tracy Davies, who's outlined to me the number of ways her staff is working 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to make sure we have the safest drinking water possible in our own city. As many of you may know from the reports out of Flint, the situation there has been caused by pipes and deteriorating infrastructure that transports water to residents. Decades of testing has confirmed that here in Columbus, the water that leaves our plants is the highest quality possible, and that we as a city are committed to improving the underground lines that take the water to our residents. One thing homeowners can do if they are concerned about the possibility of exposure to lead in Columbus is to have a licensed plumber inspect the service lines to make sure lead is not entering the water. They can also get more information on lead in our drinking water by going to the Public Utilities website at columbus.gov-publicutilities, or call the Water Quality Assurance Lab at 614-645-7314. Again, I appreciate your leadership. I know some people are concerned locally, but really, all we can do is well for the residents and businesses of Flint, Michigan. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stenziano. I appreciate your leadership in letting folks hear that information. Councilmember, President Protem Tyson.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden, and I appreciate the resolutions you're passing tonight and the comments you've made. I also appreciate the comments made by Councilmember Stenziano, just continuing to verify to our residents in Columbus how safe our water is, and we are so appreciative of the Public Utilities Department ensuring that we can drink water, bathe in water, and have safe water. So I appreciate that you've given those comments. This really is a significant issue in Flint, as you just stated, Councilmember Harden, that just thinking about education, and education is key to your economy growing. And so when you have individuals who have lead poisoning, you know, it affects their brain, it affects their brain development, and it ultimately can affect, you know, them in terms of their future, in terms of working in a community. And so I have to ask the question, what will happen to these kids 25 years from now? Who's going to be looking after testing for these young individuals? It also bears the thought about our infrastructure. I mean, we just talked about the infrastructure we have in Columbus and the investment we've made in it, but we need to, you know, thinking about Flint, Michigan, about the infrastructure and what's going to happen there. And we also know we have aging infrastructure across the country, that lead is not the issue, but in this issue, it really is a major, a significant issue. And then lastly, public safety. It affects public safety because we know that through FBI statistics, that there's a national rate of violent crime today is roughly what it was in 1993. But you also realize that lead poisoning, because thinking about brain development, can be linked to public safety. So there are a lot of areas that this can have an impact on. And so we as a city, we as a country, really need to continue to, you know, to pay attention to what happens to the Flint community, and really through, hopefully on our country and through prayer, we'd be able to hopefully help these individuals to move forward, because it's going to have significant, significant implications on the individuals of that community. And I'm just so thankful that our community values every single person and makes sure that we have safe drinking water for our residents. So thank you for this resolution, Councilmember Harden.
Thank you, President Protem. I want to say thank you to you. When we first started talking about this last week, you were in DC in leading conversation with the National League of Cities, and you were leading that conversation for folks, trying to do, step up and do what they can to support this city in their time of need. Any other comments? With that, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. And I would like to call up Misty Jordan from Power 106 to talk about an effort that the radio station she's leading to get water to the folks in Flint, Michigan.
First, I'd like to say thank you for providing me this platform to spread the word about Misty's water mission. There's a song that we sing as Buckeyes about, we don't, for lack of better words, we don't care about the whole state of Michigan. And I can stand here before you now and say from Ohio, that definitely is not the case. I'm obsessed, and my heart is broken over the coverage and the images that we're seeing with the water crisis in Flint. And as many of us are aware here in central Ohio, I think all of us across the nation are just kind of really glued to the coverage. So I decided to use my platform with Magic 95.5 to kind of help kick off Misty's water mission. So today was the beginning of Misty's water mission. I'm asking our listening audience to donate bottles of water, and I will collect water until Wednesday at 5:00 p.m. at our radio station. And then Thursday morning, I, along with my promotions department, will be headed to Flint, Michigan. We will distribute water personally to the residents of Flint. So I'm really excited about that, because we know exactly where the water will be going. And we will distribute at Triumph Center. Our goal at Radio 1 Cluster is to collect 100,000 bottles of water by Wednesday at 5:00 p.m. And our cluster includes Power 107.5, Joy 107.1, Boom 106.3, and then the station that I am on weekdays from 10:00 to 3:00, which is Magic 95.5. So very excited about this. This afternoon, we received several phone calls from our listeners, and them challenging each other, sororities, fraternities, different organizations, and lots of water already coming in this afternoon. So we've got to find a place to put it. That's a good problem to have, and I'm excited. So our Radio 1 office is located 350 East First Avenue, Suite 100, and you can find more information on our website, which is mycolumbusmagic.com. Thank you all very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your leadership on this.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Is that it, Councilmember? Okay. Councilmember Page, Stenziano.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening I wanted to take a brief moment to address an area of concern, as the city has experienced three potentially preventable tragedies that concern fire safety. Five people in three different incidents have died this past week in fires in Columbus, four in Franklinton and one in Mifflin. I encourage those who are either watching at home or listening to please make sure that you have properly installed smoke detectors and that any security measures that you have on your property do not interfere with the safe exit of your home in case of an emergency. I do want to commend the Columbus Fire Department for going door-to-door in the Franklinton community last week to install more than 100 smoke detectors for free to those that accepted. I encourage others to reach out to the Columbus Fire Department's Smoke Alarm Hotline at 614-724-0935 for more information about free smoke detectors to make sure that you and your family are safe. Remember that if you rent, your landlord must supply the smoke detectors, but it's up to the residents to replace the batteries. With Columbus residents and the Fire Department continuing to work together, it's our hope that we can promote fire safety and prevent similar tragedies from happening. Thank you, President Klein.
Thank you. President Protem Tyson.
Thank you, President Klein. I have one resolution. It's Resolution 0017X-2016. I'm going to ask Barbara Freeman to walk towards the podium. This resolution is to recognize January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month and to acknowledge Barbara Freeman for her advocacy to end human trafficking through empowerment and awareness. Whereas every year, an increasingly number of women, of people fail to fall victim to human trafficking, as it is one of the fastest-growing illegal trades both around the world and in central Ohio. Whereas human trafficking is an estimated multi-billion dollar a year enterprise, an international enterprise, in which 1,078 Ohio children become victims and over 3,000 more are at risk. Whereas victims of human trafficking need support in order to escape and recover from the physical, mental, emotional, and spiritual trauma associated with victimization. And whereas human traffickers use many physical and psychological techniques to control their victims, including the use of violence or threats of violence against a victim or the victim's family, isolation from the public, language and cultural barriers, threats of arrests, deportation, as well as other control tactics. And whereas Ohio has been dedicated to eliminate human trafficking in 2014, Ohio rescued 181 victims and arrested 98 traffickers, but there is still more work to be done. Whereas Barbara Freeman knows darkness, desperation, as well as being forced into sex trafficking during her teen years. Whereas Ms. Freeman emerged as one of the first graduates of the Ketch Court started by Judge Paul Herbert of the Franklin County Municipal Court, and has since founded the Freeman Project, an initiative designed to help fight human trafficking and addiction. Whereas for her advocacy efforts, Ms. Freeman was honored by the induction into the 29th YWCA Women of Achievement Class. And whereas Ms. Freeman's efforts to promote human trafficking awareness in the city of Columbus... whereas Ms. Freeman's efforts to promote human trafficking awareness in the city of Columbus represent her commitment to the eradication of human trafficking. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus, that this council recognizes the importance of raising awareness of and the opposition to human trafficking, and does hereby recognize the month of January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month. I move for passage.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Ms. Freeman, the floor is yours.
Thank you. First, I want to just thank you, Ms. Tyson, for inviting me this evening to bring the awareness and also just let the community know that, as me being a survivor of human trafficking, being trafficked for 23 years, been out of it for seven years, completely changed my life, went on to work for the Alvis House, as well as to be a leader in our community to change, to try to change this modem that has been going on. For the last four years, it has been my passion to go out and save women from the same thing that I have been saved from. So, I just wanted to read a little bit about what the Freeman Project is and what the Freeman Project does. The Barbara Freeman Project, I'm also the founder and the CEO of my nonprofit organization, which addresses the immediate needs of those women who have been trapped in the lifestyle of human trafficking, addiction of alcohol and drugs. The Freeman Project will provide immediate housing for those women who have successfully completed the recovery program. The Freeman Project is about those women who have been forced into sex trafficking and addicts to drug during their teen and adult years. I've spent 23 years in abusive lifestyle of trafficking and addiction. For the past four years, my passion has been to break the cycle and assist other women for those possessive of change and driven by the successful transition. My motivation is to address this rising issue to center of my faith of trust in God, which is to contribute my amazing life transition. The need for women completing treatment and transitioning to the safe house environment has been, and therefore, a front of my mission. I emerged as one of the first graduates, just as you said, at the Catch Court Program. I'm the very first woman to have entered that program, and ever since then, I continue to walk through the doors every day, I mean, every Thursday, to show these women that it is possible to change their lives. My mission is to reconnect isolated women and men to God and the community of support and providing human social services that addresses the short and long-term needs in the areas of homelessness, poverty, food, clothing, shelters, and human trafficking. My vision is to build a community of resilient people who lives have been redeemed by God's grace, mercy, and love. Together, they will become self-sufficient through sustainable and gainful employment, housing, recovery process, rebuilding relationships with children and family membership, and healthy lifestyles. Just a few months ago, the Freeman Project was donated a six-bedroom house to enable those women that I have rescued off of the streets. Once they've graduated the programs, they will come into the Freeman Project housing, and they will live there for up to a year to regain custody of their children, regain their lives, and also to become, to become self-sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, for coming down. I had the opportunity about a week ago to go to a program, it's called Detour 2016, and during that presentation, it was, it was music, dance, and drama, and they really showed the effects of human trafficking. It was an amazing program. I think they'll have it again next year. I would certainly state to my council members that would be a great opportunity to go and just to be able to see human trafficking in a very different way, and just, and there were a number of speakers there, and from the Columbus Police Department. In between the little vignettes, they had different speakers come up and talk that are involved, that are involved in human trafficking awareness, and Detective Larry Wilson from the Columbus Police Department was there, and he spoke, but also represents from the Catch Court, from the Ohio Attorney General's Office, just lots of different people who are involved in making sure that women and men are not going to be human trafficked. So, I thank you for what you're doing to help individuals to move forward in their lives. Congratulations on your recovery and for 20 years to be human trafficked and to be standing here today and making change occur for other women is pretty, it's just, it is a blessing, and so, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara. I have a few announcements, and the first one is, just one week away is the enrollment period that's left for the ACA, which, and for the mark, for the health insurance marketplace, January 31st is the deadline. Also, tomorrow, Tuesday, January 26th at 5:00 PM, I will convene my committee hearing from Finance, Health, and Human Services and Workforce Development, so for my legislation that will appear on the council agenda for the next two weeks. And then, also, this Thursday, January 28th at 5:00 PM, I will hold a meeting of the Finance Committee to allow public comment on the 2016 budget. And so, if you're in the listening audience, please come down, and if you have, make any comments regarding the 2016 budget. As with previously mentioned announcement, all interested citizens are invited to come down. You have three minutes to speak, and we look forward to hearing your comments on the 2016 budget. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, President Pro Tim Tyson. Are there any comments from our elected officials? Auditor Dorian, City Attorney Richard C. Pfeiffer, Jr.? I don't see anyone from the Court Administration or from the court. Is there any request by members of council for removal of an ordinance resolution with the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Clerk, call the rule.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation for tonight's, on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee ordinance is 51 and 116-2016. Public Safety Committee ordinance 105-2016. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance 127-2016. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2885-3079-3173-3183-3198-3202-3204-3206-2015, and ordinances 3, 11, 12, 13, 14, 17, 20, 25, 42, and 80-2016.
Thank you. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions, and will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 19X-2016. Finance Committee Resolution 7X-2016. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 40, 41, 57, 62, and 167-2016. Economic Development Committee ordinance 171-2016. Public Safety Committee ordinance 95-2016. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance 3209-2015, and ordinances 48, 53, 55, 56, 61, 63, 88, and 165-2016. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance 3145-2015, and 126-2016. Housing Committee ordinance is 7, 8, 90, 91, 92, 93, 152, 153, 154, and 155-2016. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2956, 2975, 3059, 3071, 3101, 3138, 3174, 3175-2015, and 18-2016. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee ordinance is 6970, 71-2016.
Thank you, clerk. We do have one speaker on the non-agenda action portion of the agenda. That's Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council. Looks like you're speaking on 8/2016. You have three minutes. If you could identify yourself for the record. The floor is yours.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, the chairman of sole vacant land management property in the North London area. I'll be bringing to your attention tonight 008-2016 for 1585 of Myrtle Avenue. First of all, I'd just like to say three things about this particular property. This particular property has sat vacant for a long time, but again, I would like to know what it's going to be used for. I know you got it in your nose for a care of emergency. What I don't want to see is not a rental property, but this particular property would have to be done for a better use of it, but I would like to know what it's going to be used for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Director Shoney, do you have any comments?
Thank you, President Klein, members of council. This property will be used for rental. Of the 10 properties we have on the agenda this evening, six out of the 10 will be used for rental, three will be rehab for homeownership, and one is a duplex. That half will be used for ownership, and then the other half will be rented out.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Shoney? Seeing none, I'd like to have a motion to approve all of these designated items as consent actions by voice vote. Is there a second? Clerk, call the rule, please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Page? Stenziano? Tyson?
Yes, with the exception of 0040-2016, of which I am abstaining.
President Klein?
Yes. Consent agenda passes. Will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled in emergency legislation. The first committee is the Health and Human Services Committee. President Pro Tim Tyson chairs that committee. Councilmember Tyson, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The first ordinance I have is ordinance number 0015-2016, is to authorize and direct the Board of Health to enter into a contract with the Ohio State University College of Nursing to provide training and certification to community health workers for the Celebrate One Community Connector Course project, and to authorize expenditure of $69,000 from the city's private grants fund and to declare an emergency. So, this is an exciting program, and this program will, first of all, think about Ohio State. Ohio State will be providing 12 to 14 weeks of paid training with, for our community health worker certification program. There'll be a part-time, part-time paid internship, which will be ending December 31st of 2016, and it will be a support for long-term employment in the health-related fields through workforce development and continuing education. This program is going to kick off February the 24th. They are, we'll have 24 community connectors. We've had 100 individuals apply to be a community connector. These community connectors are going to be working in eight priority neighborhoods: London, the near south side, the near east side, Hilltop, Franklinton, northeast, southeast, and north, in the northern area. And their goal really is to work with the residents in those communities to ensure that, in regards to infant mortality, that we will be able to have these individuals working with individuals in those communities in order to reduce infant mortality. To be able to have these individuals will be connecting the residents with the services in our community that will help those residents to get all the services they need, again, with the, with the ultimate goal is to reduce infant mortality. So, this is an exciting program, great partnership with the Ohio State University School of Nursing, and we just really do look forward to all the positives that will come from this program. Dr. Long, do you want to add any additional comments?
Counsel Chair Tyson and members of council, we are very excited about this initiative. It clearly is working in the neighborhoods. We will, all of the funds will actually go for the whole project to community organizations who will actually be hiring the 24 outreach workers, and then, obviously, these funds will go to the College of Nursing, where their community health worker certification will be, they'll be educated and hopefully receive that certification. So, this is both a workforce development, a resident-to-resident education project, so we're very excited about this.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? I move for passage.
Clerk, call the rule.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0037-2016, is to authorize the appropriation of $500,000 from the Unappropriate Balance of the General Government Grants Fund to Columbus Public Health for the 2016 HOPE program and to declare an emergency. The HOPE program provides for the implementation of long-term comprehensive strategies for meeting the need, housing needs of low-income persons with HIV and AIDS and their families. And the eligible activities include providing housing information services, resource identification, acquisition, rehabilitation, conversion, lease, and repair of facilities to provide housing and services to housing units, project or tenant-based rental assistance, short-term rent, mortgage, and utility payments. In 2015, the HOPE provided long-term rental housing and utility assistance to about 100 HIV-positive people within our community and an additional community outside of Columbus. In addition, HOPE provided short-term rental assistance to approximately three households. This is really important for individuals who have HIV or an AIDS, and so, I'm hopeful that my council colleagues would be in support of this appropriation. So, I'd move for passage.
Clerk, call the rule.
Sorry. Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. And the last ordinance is 0054-2016, is to make the appropriation for the 12 months ending December 31st of 2016 for the Health Department's Grants Fund to the Department of Health in various projects and object classes for the continued operations of grant programs, and to authorize the Board of Health to accept 11 grand awards and to declare an emergency. And the amount for these awards, the appropriation would be $4,642,327.95. And some of the legislation is around minority health, dental sealant program, the alcohol, immigration women's support program, alcohol and adult prevention program, so there are a number of programs. You'll be hearing more legislation will pass on each of these, but I just want to bring this to my council members' attention. I move for passage.
Clerk, call the rule.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation passed.
Thank you. That's all I have on legislation, and I didn't mention one other comment during my announcements. I just want to, again, I want to recognize the life of Mr. Dennison Ward, Denny Griffith, to extend our sincerest condolences to his family and friends on the occasion of his passing. And Denny really did, his work at the, at the Columbus College of Art and Design is just pretty, was just amazing how he transformed the College of Art and Design with so many new and innovative programs, and just really appreciate his life work that was dedicated to the arts and, and making this a great city for the arts, and just our hearts and, our hearts and thoughts go out to his family. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, President Pro Tim Tyson. Is that all? All right. Our next committee is the Economic Development Committee. Councilmember Elizabeth Brown chairs that committee. Councilmember Brown, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Economic Development Committee, we have ordinance number 169-2016 to authorize an appropriation of $8,456,268 in various divisions of the Community Development Block Grant Fund to provide funding for approved programs and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
There's a second by President Pro Tim Tyson. Clerk, call the rule.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation passed.
Thank you. I also have legislation in the Administration Committee. With your permission, I'd like to proceed. Thank you. Tonight in Administration Committee, we have ordinance number 134-2016 to accept memorandum of understanding number 2015-01 executed between representatives of the Communications Workers of America, CWA Local 4502, which amends the collective bargaining agreement April 24th, 2014 through April 23rd, 2017, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, call the rule.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation passed.
Thank you, President Klein. That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, council member. The next committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Harden chairs that committee. Councilmember Harden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Public Service and Transportation Committee, we have ordinance 0052-2016 to authorize the Director of Public Service to pay the city's annual membership dues to the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission for the Department of Public Service, Division of Design and Construction, to authorize the expenditure of $425,834.24 from the Streets Construction, Maintenance, and Repair Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is a payment for the city of Columbus's annual membership dues to MORPC. Many of you know MORPC as a voluntary association of central Ohio governments and regional organizations that enable all of our communities to look at transportation, energy, housing, land use, the environment, and economic prosperity from new innovative and comprehensive -- use, the environment, and economic prosperity from new innovative and comprehensive perspectives. With over 60 members, MORPC serves Ohio's fastest-growing city by connecting us to our neighbors, providing us with crucial data and research, and ensuring that policymakers are well-informed. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you.
Legislation passed.
And lastly, we have 0059-2016, to amend the 2015 capital improvement budget to appropriate funds within the Street and Highway Improvement Fund, to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation within the Streets and Highway Improvement Fund, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of City Colum, Columbus City Code, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with G S and P O H, Inc., for environmental and management systems support and support in the EMS certification process for the Department of Public Service, and to expend up to $330,000 to pay for the contract and declare an emergency. This ordinance is before us because it weighs competitive bidding clause of the City Code, and so I'd ask Director Gallagher to, just please speak to why that is necessary.
Yes. President Klein, Council Chair Harden, and other members of council, the reason that we decided to waive bid on this is G S and P recently completed an environmental audit for fleet management, and while they were doing that, they were on some of the property of public service. And so, since they were already out there, they've already know our processes and procedures based on what they did for fleet management, we chose to go ahead and move forward with G S and P so we could save taxpayers' dollars and time. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation passed.
That's all of Public Service and Transportation this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. The next committee on the agenda is the Recreation and Parks Committee. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Recreation and Parks, we have two companion pieces, both dealing with golf course equipment and getting ready for, to open them up in the springtime. We have ordinance 2993-2015, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into contract with Century Equipment, to authorize the city auditor to appropriate, transfer, and expend $49,517.16 from the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund and Permanent Improvement Fund, to amend the 2015 capital improvements budget, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, and to declare an emergency. Director Collins, could you speak briefly on why we are waiving the competitive provisions of the Columbus City Code?
Councilmember Page, President Klein, members of council, thank you. This is, both of these pieces are pieces that we're replacing with the same type of equipment. So, in other words, they're both, the Toro Sidewinder is being replaced with the Toro Sidewinder mower, and then the Toro Sprayer is being replaced with the Toro Sprayer. So, obviously, we've had great experience with this equipment. It's made specifically to handle the terrain at Turnberry Golf Course, and so we're looking to replace it with similar equipment.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed.
And thank you, Director, for addressing the, why we're waiving competitive bidding on both provisions. We now have ordinance 2999-2015, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract with Century Equipment, to authorize the expenditure of $30,596.46 from Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Funds, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed.
Thank you, President. Enter, that's all we have in Recreation and Parks.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. The next committee is the Public Utilities Committee. It's okay, Councilmember Page.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Public Utilities Committee, we have ordinance 3770-2015, which is to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish blanket purchase orders for the purchase of sewer treatment chemicals for the Department of Public Utilities, Division of Sewerage and Drainage, and to authorize the expenditure of $2,140,000 from the Sewerage Operating Fund to establish an auditor certificate in the amount of $2,140,000 for the expenditures listed within this legislation and declare an emergency. Fellow council members, you know, chemicals are an important part of the sewer treatment process, and it's being submitted as an emergency to ensure there's no interruptions in the timely delivery of those chemicals used in the treatment process. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed.
Thank you, President Klein. And next we have ordinance 3771-2015, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish blanket purchase orders for the purchase of water treatment chemicals for the Department of Public Utilities, Division of Water, to authorize the expenditure of $17,500,000 from the Wa, Water Operating Fund, to establish an auditor certificate in the amount of $17,500,000 for the expenditures listed within this legislation and declare an emergency. Similar to the previous ordinance, this is again intended to make sure there's no interruptions in the timely delivery of chemicals, in this case, for water treatment process, particularly to address taste and odor events. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. That's all we have in Public Utilities and my other committees.
Thank you, Chairman Stenziano. The final committee tonight before we recess for zoning is the Rules and Reference Committee. I chair that committee. We have a piece 249-2016 to repeal and replace various sections of Chapter 585, 588, 590 of the Columbus City Code, repairing the regulation of peer-to-peer transportation network companies, and to repeal and replace ordinance number 3009-2015 and declare an emergency. This legislation is the exact same legislation we passed last week, however, we were a council member down in order to pass an emergency. Now that we are fully staffed as a council, I'd like to reconsider this because of the, the time lag in between when this legislation that we've recently passed two weeks ago would take place compared to the state legislation. It would require individual drivers, thousands of whom, would have to pay $35 to the city, knowing that ultimately, the PUCO and the City of Columbus would be allowing the transportation network companies themselves to be regulated, where drivers would not have to pay a fee that the regulation simply would be for the transportation network companies, thereby allowing each individual driver sparing them the $35. So, now that we're fully staffed as a council, I'd like to move for passage by voice vote. Clerk call the roll, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Klein?
Yes, legislation passed. So, it looks like we're done through the formal action before we get to zoning. We have several non-agenda speakers, so if we have no other business, I'd like to get a motion to adjourn this meeting. We'll reconvene for zoning at 6:30, and we'll have non-agenda, pardon me, non-agenda speakers shortly. Is there a motion to adjourn? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We are adjourned, and we'll take non-agenda speakers in probably the next five minutes. Regular meeting number five will now come to order. Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
Are there any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
We'll now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. All members serve on the committee. Councilmember Page, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. It's my understanding that we do not have any speaker slips this evening, and we will go ahead to our first variance, 0046-2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332, Section 39, R4 residential district use, 3312, 25 maneuvering, 3312, Section 49, minimum numbers of parking space is required, 3332, Section 05, area district lot width requirements, 3332, Section 15, R4 area district requirements, 3332, Section 19, fronting, 3332, Section 21D, building lines, 3332, Section 26, minimum side yard permitted, and 3332, Section 27, rear yard of the City of Columbus codes, for the property located at 1087 St. Avenue, 43201, to permit a single-unit dwelling, a carriage house, in the rear yard of a lot developed with a single-unit dwelling, with reduced development standards in the R4 residential district. The applicant is Audra and Lacey Wooler of 1087 St. Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, 43201. The proposed use is two single-unit dwellings on one lot. The city department's recommendation is approval. The Italian Village Commission recommended approval. I would like to first move to waive second reading.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
I now move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We have variance 0072-2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3356, Section 03, C4 permitted uses, and 3356, Section 11A2, C4 district setback lines of the Columbus City Codes, for the property located at 171 East Livingston Avenue, 43215, to permit first-floor residential use with a reduced building line in the C4 commercial district. The applicant is KV Development LLC, in care of Mencenzo Fresola, architect, 207, 16th Street, Suite 403, Ashland, Kentucky, 41101. The proposed use is first-floor residential use. The city department's recommendation is approval. German Village Commission recommended approval. I would now like to move to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
I now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Variant 0073-2016, to rezone 1590 McNauton Road, 43232, being 8.66 acres located at the east side of McNauton Road, 1,200 feet north of Livingston Avenue, from R1 residential district to LAR12 Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Homeport, care of Dave Perry, David Perry Company Incorporated, 145 East Ridge Street, Third Floor, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval. The Far East Area Commission recommended approval. And I would like to first move to waive second reading.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
I now move to table this variance indefinitely.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Variant 0128-2016, to rezone 1045 Leona Avenue, 43201, being .18 acres located at the southeast corner of Leona Avenue and Roselle Avenue, from M Manufacturing District to R4 residential district. The applicant is Brad E. Haley, 640 Bear Run Lane, Lewis Center, Ohio, 43035. The proposed use is a three-unit, two-floor dwelling. The city department's recommendation is approval. Milo Grogan Area Commission recommended approval. I would like to first move to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
I now move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And I now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And our final variance for this evening, 0129-2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3312, Section 29, parking space, 3321, Section 05B2, vision clearance, Section 3332.05, area district lot width requirements, and Section 3332, Section 28, side or rear yard obstruction of the Columbus City Codes, for the property located at 1045 Leona Avenue, 43201, to permit a three-unit dwelling with reduced development standards for a three-unit dwelling in the R4 residential district. The applicant is Brad E. Haley, 640 Bear Run Lane, Lewis Center, Ohio, 43035. The proposed use is a three-unit, two-floor dwelling that will be in compliance with zoning standards. The city department's recommendation is approval. Milo Grogan Area Commission recommended approval. I would like to first move to waive the second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And I now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation passed.
Thank you, President Klein. We have nothing further in zoning this evening.
Any other business to come before council? Seeing none, I get a motion to adjourn special, or regular meeting number five? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Adjourned.[1793.86][1793.86]